Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Abington School Committee meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. If I could ask everybody to stand to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to one which is fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And that tonight we are going to be speaking about the FY 2022 School Department Budget. And Peter will take it away.
Thank you. So just to explain how we got here. You know that you had a public meeting and then a budget meeting in January, which was a picture in time of the school department's budget, really from November to December. And the budget presentations made in January with the best estimates that we could make for the following fiscal year. So this budget presentation, fast forward a couple of months, things become to get things begin to get clearer. And this happens to us every year and we tune this number in. Between then and now, we also met with the Finance Committee. We've the town of Abington. I want to thank them for the time they gave us and the questions they asked us. We also met a number of times with the Financial Officers Group at the Town Hall. Leadership team there appreciate the time that they gave us and the collaboration that we've had with with funding. Because I believe what we have, we know what we have for you tonight would be a consensus budget with those other groups. We also had our subcommittee meetings, our school committee, subcommittee meetings, which were two different groups based on the timing of the elections. Just last week, we met with Julie and Heidi and I'm sorry, Julie and Danielle. And we went through. Basically, this presentation answered their questions. And so that's the work that's been done behind the scenes, along with the sharpening of the pencil that occurs as the numbers become clearer. So. So tonight, and I promise I'm not going to read a PowerPoint presentation to you because that would be a terrible thing. But I would like to be able to use it as reference and for the purpose of clarity with the community. And you each should have a copy of it, but then Felicia was going to show her screen. So that I can walk through it, hopefully in a more in a way that's more understandable for anybody who's watching. Thank you, Felicia. So FY 22 budget, May, I'm not going to read it to you. You know what month it is. Felicia, can I please have the next slide? Thank you. So this FY 22 budget proposal of $26,478,813 is the operational budget for next year. And it takes in to account a couple of assumptions. One is that there'll be a full person in person return. Two, growing numbers of students in the Abington Public Schools. And then certain built in costs, which I'll talk about as I as I work through this. So the first position is an English language learner teacher. We currently have a one to thirty four ratio in our with teachers to students. There are other support staff in the English Language Learner Program, but this is the teacher ratio. The students are both in all of the all of the classes we have in Abington, depending on their grade level, but then they're also pulled to do work. And we've had a growth in this population. It continues to grow in order to serve their needs. We need to increase by a teacher. The second position is a special education teacher to increase the partial inclusion that's provided at the Beaverbrook Elementary School. The Woodsdale and the middle school already have these partial inclusion models in place. This would enable our youngest needy students a better educational service. And this is obviously, we have responsibility to all students K through twelve, period K through twelve, to provide them educational services. Really, really critically, the earliest students and their being able to read successfully impacts them for the rest of their educational careers. We want to make sure that we provide this position so we can provide this service. Adding a professional, a paraprofessional also at the Beaverbrook. We have a number of students coming out of the early childhood program that are going to need the assistance of this paraprofessional. We know that with the number of special education students we have. These are students with some challenging special needs. And it's always best for us to educate our students in the district when we can provide them good service. It's best for those students and is also financially best for us. This is an effort to help keep those students in the district, providing them the programming that they need. Next slide, please. We have a population growth. We need to add a fifth grade teacher. We're confident if we don't, we'll have class sizes in grade five of twenty nine. This will reduce those class sizes to twenty four. A steam teacher for the middle school reduces the class sizes from twenty nine to twenty four. It also improves the ability to do middle school the way that we want to do middle school, the middle school model, where the teachers have an ability to have more common planning time. This is the time when our students come from what is more a day that's with one or two teachers and then they all of a sudden they've got seven or eight teachers. It can be confusing that this will help improve that model to provide more consistency across classes at the middle school. A computer and network technician. When when we're talking about technology, you know, but I just want to pause and think about the amount of devices. Computers, software, alarm, security cameras, phones, online services. So the money that we're putting into these items, if our users can have a better experience because we can offer better support for the devices and for the user, that really pays dividends across the board in Abington. We currently have two people that take care of the needs of 2,500 students and staff. And going into next year, we don't anticipate that there'll be less use of technology. As we become more reliant on it, there'll be more so. So every day, not every day, but every couple of days, we check this number, check the number of incoming kindergarteners just just today. And fairly confident we're going to have twenty nine if we don't add a kindergarten section, which adds a kindergarten teacher and a kindergarten paraprofessional. And we didn't know this in January, but it's likely we're going to also need to add the grade one teacher. Otherwise, we'll have class size of twenty nine in grade one. And again, these are youngest learners who are learning to read. These are critical times developmentally for these students, not that it's not important in other places, but we certainly can't have kindergarten and grade one classes of twenty nine. Our kindergarten numbers are a bit higher even at twenty four, but that's because we also have a paraprofessional in those classrooms, which many other systems don't have a teacher and a paraprofessional and a paraprofessional in those rooms. If we get a benefit of hiring at a maybe we can bring people in at a less than estimated cost or maybe we, if if I'm if we're wrong about these numbers and we'll know more in the next two months with kindergarten grade one for sure. The next position you want to go to would be an adjustment counselor for the middle school and the high school. This is something, you know, we want to have especially post pandemic. However, we we don't want to add this at the expense of some of those positions you saw earlier in the budget presentation. If I could go to the next slide. Oh, I should mention before I go further, adding a grade five, adding a kindergarten and adding a grade one will also mean we'll have to likely add some additional sections of music, art, health and wellness. Those would be fractions of positions to make sure that those students had a full program. I just, I'd just like to mention that just to make sure that people are aware that we're on that. And that when they see those additions next year as a result of increased sections, I at least raise my hand. Sorry, Felicia. So what you have seen along with an enablement for contractual obligations, totals, an increase to the salary account, eight hundred and fifty six thousand, seven hundred and forty two dollars. That's five hundred and ninety eight thousand, three hundred and twenty three dollars in the one fifty E, which is the new negotiation line, contractual obligations, and then the and then the new positions of two fifty eight, four nineteen. The positions that you saw there total more than two hundred and fifty eight thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. However, if you remember, we had a fall town meeting that increased the school department's operational budget of about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. And so that those monies are already in our budget to absorb costs. And this is the increase page, if that makes any sense. And we've got programs of the districts with special education tuitions, which has been reduced to from what it was previously to two hundred and eighty two thousand, three hundred and twenty four dollars. This is the increase that we anticipate we will see to take care of the needs of our students that are out of the district, out of our district that we are responsible to pay for educational service for. And anticipating students that could possibly possibly go out next year. And a circuit breaker offset at seventy two percent. That's the money that we get the year after we pay the bills. So this is money that we will get based on money we're spending with a reimbursement of seventy two percent. And and that provides an offset to our special education account of two hundred and one thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars for total increase in the program with other districts, section of our budget of eighty thousand, eight hundred and sixty four dollars. Transportation, Felicia is going out to bid for our bus contract. The contract lasts three years and then over a period of two, one year and then a second, one year, which is two years in total. You can go and extend the contract for a total of five years. We've done that. That's generally the best practice because when you go out to bid, you see increases in transportation costs. During that three to five year period of time, you can hold your costs better. It's anticipated that bid's going to come up, come back with an increase of a hundred and sixty four thousand, four hundred and forty four dollars. And then special education transportation, which truly changes every week, if not every day, depending on where our students are going. An increase of twenty one thousand, six hundred and seventy eight dollars for a total of other school services of a hundred and eighty six thousand, one hundred and twenty two dollars. And an increase to the FY 22 budget of one million, one hundred and twenty three thousand, seven hundred and twenty eight dollars. With that, that would reflect a four point four three percent increase to our operational budget. And the and the total is twenty six million, four hundred and seventy eight thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. So, you know, as I, as I mentioned, when you, when you start forecasting your budget in advance and it's November and December, things, things change by the time, if you're doing your job, you're, you're watching numbers, you're checking your estimates. And each time we do this, the budget's really a snapshot in time reflective of the time you take that picture. And so this is the number that we're recommending to the committee for our operational budget for the following fiscal year. And this is, this is the number that through all of the committee work that I described earlier, we've, we have what I believe is a consensus budget with the town. So I want to answer any questions that that people may have.
Peter, I got a few. All right, I got, Heidi, go ahead. Go first.
Mine is actually less of a budgetary question and more of an operational question. Only because I know in the past when we have sort of contingencies on the hiring at the lower levels, K one particularly. Is we've had as late as the day before or two days before school starting that we've decided, do we have a drop dead date where we're going to say we're hiring? Or are we going to just, just to ease parents' mind of the teacher they think their child's going to have in August is truly the child the teachers are going to have? Do we have any ideas on that?
So yeah, absolutely. And I appreciate, appreciate that. So anytime that it's been a last minute hire, it's, it's generally because the candidate that you thought you had that accepted the position leaves you at the last minute. That's the only time that really happens. And unfortunately, that happens more and more these days. When, you know, when you shake somebody's hand, you say you've got a job and they commit, they're going to come. It wasn't so long ago they came and that was it. Now, if they get a two or three thousand or four, five thousand dollar offer from somebody else that they were waiting on a call from, they leave you. Which is, I don't know, you know, is frustrating for me, I got to tell you. So, no, parents don't need to worry to be more direct in answering the question. Because these decisions have been made well before the start of school and well before the notices go out about what teachers, students will have. We'll, we'll know this for sure in the next four or five weeks. What happens is, and I wish we knew sooner, but we go through this registration period. We get students that are coming to us from kindergarten that aren't on our radar because they weren't in our preschool. They're at at home, especially with COVID. They may not have registered, they wanted to keep them home and delay a year. Same thing happens in first grade where people may do some private option for kindergarten. So we do, we do talk to the privates and ask about rosters and what we can anticipate. But you really don't know until they come because they also have other options that they could exercise. So we don't want to wait and not get the best people possible. And so the moment you know, you move. So. Did that answer it?
Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, I just had to wait for the unmuted. I have a few, so I may stop and then see, but I have a few I want to ask you. Peter, I guess I think you just asked the first one. So Finance Committee, your expectation is they will recommend this budget to go through a town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. You mentioned a lot of things, a lot of, well, not a lot, but at least two new class, and so maybe this, maybe there's a decrease somewhere else, but Beaverbrook space.
Yeah.
So right now it looks like two new classrooms. I don't know if there's two, if that's gross too, and there's a reduction somewhere or not, but is there? I'm guessing the room is there unless this wouldn't be here, but.
Great question. No, great question. There is room. There's room also for music and art. We do believe that we have space for the art to have its own dedicated room. And there's a possibility that that music may need to do some moving. But there's room if we do those things for these two sections.
Okay.
That was actually a conversation just had just recently. We've been checking all along the way, but then again, as these numbers become clearer.
Yep.
You get more specific.
And I think so, I think the next, the next or the rest of the questions I have are more related to because we can't, we approved this pseudo in January when we went through, we approved it. So I knew what those were then. So I guess I kind of, my questions are more related to from then to now, so the four months in between. So I don't remember a fifth grade teacher being on the initial list of positions. What changed? Like, did something change? Did it get missed? What happened there?
Yeah, didn't get missed. We got more kids.
Okay.
All right, great question. And and what do they, I hate when the weather people call it the jackpot area for snow. Well, grade five was the jackpot. I hear I'm going to do it now. Grade five was the jackpot area for students entering Abington. So I could go back and check to see what the number was back in December. But then again, you know, if we're doing our job, we are rechecking all of these things before we had to town meeting. So it was good in December and now it's up. And that could happen in another grade level. That happened before. We've got that we don't know because they move in over the summer. And then I'm coming back to the committee and saying, you know, we've got to figure this out because we don't want to have twenty nine kids or thirty kids in any section.
Anybody else, if anyone else wants to ask something, I got like two more, but the, so maybe I just need clarification on when you talked about new positions. So in looking at this blankly, it looks like there are more new positions here than there were in January. But the increase from prior year for new positions is a hundred grand less than it was in January. I'm having trouble just balancing that out.
And I don't blame you.
Okay.
Because what you said is right and it doesn't make sense. So I'll do my best to explain it. And then we can go as deep as we need and you've got Felicia to help us. So the positions that are here are positions that were a part of that original presentation. But we went into that section where we said that we probably won't get these.
Right, yep.
So there's more, we want it deeper. And we are still following that philosophy from January. So right now, we're seeing an increase of our English language learners and we're seeing an increase of of students across different grade levels in Abington. Because we're seeing these increases combined with the changes in the chapter seventy formula, we're getting more money from the state. That money was some of that, that money was added this year. And we weren't certain that that money was coming because it was, it was the COVID and we didn't know what our budget meant. Remember last year, actually looking at, we could have perhaps have a ten percent cut to our budget.
Yeah.
So we got the additional funding and these are, and these positions would come from what we can anticipate our reoccurring funds because it's increases in chapter seventy money down in town. But we had that special fall town meeting where we added to our budget. And so those dollars are here. And what you're seeing are increases to the salary account. And because those dollars are already a part of our budget, they're offsetting that increase.
But weren't they there when you did this in January? Like, weren't they there like that? So that fall town meeting, that was the fiscal year twenty one budget, right?
Good question. And at that time, we were, we were budgeting, we were funding at that time and budgeting for additional bathroom, custodial, parent professional. Because if you remember in November and December, we weren't even sure if we were ever going to go back to school full time. And so those dollars were up in the air or committed for that at that time, not knowing what this year would look like. Now, we also have federal money coming in. If we have to, I hope we don't put up tents next year. But instead of spending that money that we didn't know we were going to get the federal money on tents, professionals, custodial, extra supervision, that money can go into positions. And so that's why we made that shift. And again, if we're wrong, there's federal money, COVID money right now to help us with those expenses.
Okay.
Felicia, did I mess it up?
You did not.
Okay. And I guess the other one's within special ed. So Felicia, is that seventy two number real?
So you don't, yes, I mean, that's what we're being told is the estimate for right now. You don't know a hundred percent until the, not only the state budget is finalized, but then they fight, they calculate how much money people have submitted for circuit breakers. So at the beginning in January, when I start meeting and having meetings with business managers and with Desi, they provide you what they think you should budget for. And remember, it can go up to seventy five percent.
Yeah.
But they at the, you know, typically in January, they're very conservative. And then as we walk towards the state finalizing their budget, at least in the most recent years, it's become closer to the seventy, seventy five percent.
Okay, no, that's awesome. And I guess the only other one, and maybe it's related to the same thing I'm having trouble figuring out on the other line. But the special ed tuitions were going to increase by a little over four hundred thousand in January. But now they're only increasing by two hundred and eighty. So what changed?
So that could be, I mean, we have, we have placements that that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. So that could be two placements.
But you thought one was going to happen in January, now it's not. Like, I mean, in that's what it would have had to have happened, right? The way you, the way it went.
Right, so we anticipate that someone's either going to go out or someone came and they don't go out, or someone's come back that we had anticipated paying the bill for. And that can happen four times, five times, six times, and the net is the subtraction that you see. And then, so just to, and I can do, I want to do a better job of answering the, the really good question about the staffing too. Because I was looking at a spreadsheet today. I think we have about twenty three or four staff members right now that are just COVID related staff members that we do not anticipate having next year. And so that money's been freed up. If that doesn't, maybe that's just a shorter answer, but it clears up the other question you asked better.
I think it might, yeah, I think that might answer it better than, okay, that helps more.
So remember the meeting where we talked about how much additional staff we had to hire at the Beaverbrook alone?
Yep.
Well, we, you know, I think we started at about, we need to hire like nineteen people. And I think we ended up hiring nine or ten, am I right, Felicia? And then there's custodians at two oh one because we've got so many extra lunch shifts, so we've got to clean between. And so some of those bathroom monitors. And so really, it's twenty three, twenty four people that are here only for COVID.
Plus the number of substitutes that we've had to hire prior to people being vaccinated. If someone was a close contact, they were out for two weeks, you know, ten, eight to ten days. So when, and I, I absolutely understand how you ask, how can this change in, when this is being put together in November and December? Our outlook was very different than it is today, thank God. We did not know what we were going to be facing. So, so the, and the same thing in special education, like, like Peter said, in November and December, when Dr. Robbins is looking at the caseload, he's saying, you know, this, this student, maybe if we added a paraprofessional in kindergarten, these two students from the AEP don't need to go out. And then, and then we're, but in December, we're not sure. And then by the time we get to April, May, we're not positive, but there's a stronger inclination of how that student or how those students are going to go.
I think, yeah, I think it might be more if I'm thinking about it. It's more, there are more, there's more money coming off the books, let's say, than maybe thought in January. Is that a way of looking at it?
Yes, and it was actually, you know, like I said, December. Because remember back then, we didn't even know we were going to get this federal relief money.
Yeah. I'm just using January fifth because that was the date I had in front of my packet from the
But in preparation for that January meeting, we were taking the temperature for November and from November and December to prepare for that first week in January meeting. And if we're wrong, and I, I mean, I still want to think of I I mean, I still want to think about this pandemic going in the wrong direction. You know, we all want to come back more normally. If we're wrong about that, we've got the federal money, the the federal relief money to be our safety net. If if we've got to have these damn tents again, you know, there's federal relief money for that, which if you remember in January fifth. We didn't know we were gonna get.
Right, no, I know, yeah. Okay. Well, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
No, I I appreciate the questions, cause it doesn't make sense. So hopefully I did a better job of explaining it.
Second time.
I have another one. Um, did I? Understand correctly when you said that the addition of additional K one and five, we could be looking at. Some part-time music help. Because if they're getting more students, I think absolutely, they are going to need. More hands on deck to be able to service their students the way they deserve to be able to.
Right, unless you, unless you have these huge sections of kids taking those thing, those those like those pieces of program. You have to hire more and also in order to make the schedule. So that all of the teachers have the contractually appropriate schedule, whether it's the music teacher or the art teacher or the classroom teacher. You have to have the additional staffing to meet that schedule need if you're creating extra sections or not extra, additional sections.
Any other questions? Peter, do you have anything to add?
No, if 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 and when the committee is comfortable. Um we can vote. So what we've normally done is voted this in that quick meeting before town meeting and then. We go into town meeting in session together, because if anything came up at town meeting where we needed to take a vote, the committee is in session. So the committee can do that. If the committee were willing to do it, I would suggest that we want to vote this number tonight. Um because we know that this is the consensus number, so there's no reason to wait until um. The half an hour before the town meeting, then we could schedule a meeting fifteen minutes before the town meeting to come together so that we were in session. And um if for some reason people got delayed or, you know, we've, we've got the quorum tonight, I guess is what I'm saying. Um Julie was uh a part of these discussions because she met with us last week and went through all of this, so. Um I don't, I don't think that she would mind that we, that we did that. Um and again, it's just a. It's just me being conservative, because we've got people here now, we've got the number now. But if the committee isn't so comfortable with that, you know, we can wait until the the. Um the brief meeting before the town meeting.
Um is everyone comfortable voting tonight? Okay.
What I would ask for considerate, do you want me to give you the vote?
Yes, please.
Uh uh well, a draft vote, you guys can vote whatever you want.
Are you giving me a number?
Yes.
Okay, hold on.
I can, I can, okay. It's in the presentation.
Okay, thank you, I got it.
So what I'm requesting is you consider a vote to submit to the annual town meeting. A school department operational budget of twenty six million four hundred and seventy eight thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars for FY twenty two.
Um can you, twenty six million four hundred and seventy eight dollars?
Twenty six uh million four hundred and seventy eight thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars. Uh two, six, four, seven, eight, eight, one, three.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion, as Peter stated, to approve the FY twenty twenty two budget? At twenty six million four hundred and seventy eight thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Excellent. Looks like we're all set for tonight and uh we will see each other next week for a meeting.
And I just thank you for your time on this because people may think that this was, you know, only. A forty minute thing because we've met on it for forty minutes on cable, but that's why I really tried to lay it out at the beginning, how much time has been spent on this. So I wanna, I wanna thank uh you and and the subcommittee members that we've had. Um from January till now um for their time, so thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Excellent. So um at this time, um I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you next week. Thank you, Rich, and to Matt as well from Abington, Cam.